Let's all please stand.
Ladies and gentlemen, let us pray. Thank you heavenly Father for this study for the many blessings. To serve your people, to serve our people. We're thankful for each and every one of them. Pray God your richest blessings upon them, on their household, on their families. My Lord, and we pray that for those that have lost loved ones God recently, that you comfort their hearts as I mean you can do. Ladies, guides and directives. And plights be used for your Lord, in Jesus' name I pray.
At this time, I've called the Swain County Board of Commissioners Work Session to order December 2nd, 2025, to 5:30 p.m. Governor and ladies in the pledge.
Ladies and colors, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin tonight, thank you for being here, and sure business of our county is conducted fairly and respectfully. All remarks must be directed to the board as a whole, and audience members are asked to remain respectful and avoid interruptions, outbursts, and other disruptive behavior. Will not be permitted. The chair is responsible to maintain order and may call anyone out of order if necessary. Failure to comply will result in being removed from this meeting. Thank you for your helping us maintain a respectful environment as we work toward move forward the business of our county. All right, second items for discussion, first would be the vice chair appointment.
Mr. Chairman. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise the right hand. Pass unanimously.
Raise my hand or not on that one.
Moving on down B is the America 250 NC Committee Resolution.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Wumble. I live in the Almond area of Swain County. I'm here to request that you as our county commissioners pass a resolution to form a Swain County Committee for the America 250 NC Project. I provided you a draft resolution. That resolution is from the format provided by the State Department of Natural and Cultural Resources that all 100 counties were asked to form. The North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources is leading the nonpartisan statewide effort to plan for the commemoration of America's 250th anniversary. That is the semi-quintcentennial, and yes, I've been practicing saying that. And that is on July 4th, 2026, would be the semi-quintcentennial of the Declaration of Independence. Some of you may be aware that observances have been happening around our nation as part of the America 250 Project since 2024. Because the overall project is celebrating and observing the American Revolution from kind of the beginning through. And here in North Carolina during 2025, the state and different counties have celebrated the Methlenburg Resolves, the Halifax Resolves, the Edenton Tea Party, and other events that made North Carolina first in freedom. I got engaged on this because, as it happens, I grew up in Wilton, North Carolina, and one of my high school classmates happens to be the person in charge of this for the state of North Carolina. And when I went to my high school reunion in October, she cornered me. Yeah, she cornered me, and she was like, "You live in Swain now?" And I'm like, "Yes, you know I do," because we talked. And she said Swain County was one of only five counties in North Carolina that still didn't have a committee yet. So she asked me if I could try to get one formed. So first I tried to find somebody else to do it, and when nobody else wanted to be in charge, I decided to go ahead. And Katie, why are you not up here with me? Oh, yeah. So I researched it and worked with the person who works for her on doing the committees and looked to see what our neighboring counties are doing here in western North Carolina. And sadly, we have missed the opportunity to get grant funding for a lot of things because most of the grants, they were small grants, but they were all given out earlier in the year. But there are a lot of free resources that are available from the state Department of Cultural and Natural and Cultural Resources that our school system can access, including lessons plans and visual aids for the classrooms. Our library can get, our museum and our genealogical and historical society could get, as well as to help add to our existing events we already have here in Swain County celebrating heritage and history, such as our Heritage Festival in May, the Freedom Fest, which obviously is the 4th of July, so this will be a big 250 one, as well as the Ag Fair and any other events that we have in Swain County. So we wanted to form this committee not to create more work and not to create more things, but to try to get access to those things the state is making available so that we can bring it here to Swain County too, and not miss out on that. In forming the committee, I reached out to Katie Coe, who lives in the Deep Creek community. And she's also the vice president of the Chamber of Commerce. And Chamber of Commerce, of course, is in charge of Freedom Fest, 250th anniversary, all that. And you are in charge of Freedom Fest, aren't you? Yeah, she's the coordinator for the Chamber of Commerce. So she's agreed to be my co-chair for this, since that's kind of the focal point for us. We have worked together to invite representatives from organizations around Swain County to serve as members of the committee, including Swain County Schools, Marianna Black Library, Swain County Tourism Development Authority, Swain County Chamber of Commerce, the Town of Bryson City, the Swain County Genealogical and Historical Society, and the Swain County Agricultural Fair. That's just the beginning of who to get involved. If you approve the resolution today, then after it's signed and Cindy gets it to me, then I'll get it to the state so that they have it officially and can kind of unlock the door for those resources for our schools and the library and all the other organizations. And we will hold an informational and organizational meeting on Monday, December the 8th at noon here in this room. For those who are listening or watching, the Swain County Administration Building, third floor. That's right, right?
Oh, no, I'm on TV or whatever.
Yeah, it's okay. All right, so that's what we have going on. And you can learn more about America 250 in North Carolina at the website, america250.nc.gov, G-O-V. And you can learn more about what's happening at the national level at america250.org. Do y'all have any questions that Katie or I can answer? We're not asking for money. We're not asking for resources from you at all.
And you need us, you want us to vote on this resolution?
If you can, yeah, so that we can go ahead and get it to the state since we're already behind the power curve.
And I got a motion. All in favor, right hand? Pass unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Moving on down to C is rules and procedures policy.
So with it being December, with the appointment of the vice chair, we normally go over the rules and procedures policy. So this is the time if you feel like things need to be changed or adjusted, we can talk about that. Look at those rules and procedures and then plan on voting, bringing it back and voting it at the regular session.
Lottie, the only thing I was wanting to talk about on changing this, and I don't know how it needs to be worded and all that, but I would like to take public comment out of the work sessions. But in saying that, I would like to add some kind of town hall, however it needs to be worded, every quarter. And when I say that is, I'd like for you to somehow have your questions put in in time for us to do some research on your question. And when you come up during that public comment, that we can engage and talk to you about your, you know, what you're wanting to discuss so that we can have some knowledge. Because a lot of times when you come up and ask a question, I'm as shocked as you are about it. Because I, I mean, you know, it's just, it's just hard. But that would give us some time because I want to engage in talking. I think you can get more things done when you're talking. But, but, you know, we got to know what you're talking about to be able to engage with you. So that's the only thing. I know we'll be deleting one, but I think we'll be benefiting by adding one.
The town hall on the work session, just in place of public comments?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea. I think that gives us, it doesn't necessarily make us have another meeting, because we all.
Yeah, we're done here anyway.
But we're already here. We're all here. We can have those conversations together. I think that's a great, great start of having those conversations together. And that's the back and forth that I know a lot of people have been asking for, and it gives us the ability to do that. So I think, I think that's a great, great idea there, Jay.
Mr. Chairman, we're talking about meeting a little earlier?
No, it would just be added into our meeting. It would replace the public comment in that time period.
Yeah, it'd be just like this work session right here where it says, "Public comment slash town hall slash," however we want it to word it.
Could we not have both?
Well, that would be your public comment period, because then that would be that back and forth time. But it's something that we can think about and have a plan in two weeks, you know, at our next, at our next meeting.
I just want to be able to engage. When somebody has a question, I would love to be able to discuss it or talk about it. And you know, if I, if I knew what they were going to ask and do a little research, I could engage with them. But, you know, a lot of times when they ask a question, I'm caught off guard of it too. It takes me a while to do some follow-up on it, you know, and, and I ain't gonna lie you, by the time the next one rolls around, you've got other fish to fry, and you just, it sort of gets put on the back burner.
Public comment, we can't, we can't interchange, you know? They can't talk directly to us, and we can talk directly to them again.
Not doing public comment. We're not supposed to.
Yeah, that was.
But then that town hall.
Yeah, but in a town hall setting, we could, we could engage with them.
I believe that would be better.
I think so too. Anybody else got anything they want to add?
Could we, could we maybe vote on that next meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the reason I brought it up at this one. We'll vote on it during the regular meeting.
That'll give us time to go through the rest of them and see if there's anything else we want to change.
That's all. Just move on down to the next one, honey. Our next would be the flood ordinance update.
All right, good afternoon. Now, we had to submit our flood ordinance that we voted on to the state. And they come back and said that we had some forms, numbers in there that we had to change. So all we're really doing is bringing it back onto the floor to update it and put the correct numbers in there. And I gave you guys a highlighted copy of what the changes were. And that's basically all it is. It just, we had to put the correct form number. The form number we had in there was incorrect, so we had to go back and change that. And that was all the thing they wanted us to do. And it's been back to them. They've reviewed it. They say it's good now. So we wouldn't have to do it, do it again because everything's up to date and current.
What page is that on, Jason?
Yeah, there's, there's several places. And like on page 12, it's, it's updated three different places there. And it's that FEMA form, F206, FY22-152. And that was all it is, is FEMA form. Getting the correct form into our ordinance is what we had to change. Everything else was just verbatim. That was the main thing. And like I said, we're just bringing it to the floor because it has to say it till the next time. You know, got any questions? I gave you my phone number, so. Like I said, it's just a form number, just a technical error.
Those are just the forms that they want in there for?
Well, it had changed, and the form that we were, had, hadn't been updated. So, and we, we didn't know we needed to send it to the guy with the state. So when we sent it to him, it had been signed, he called our hand on it. So we went ahead and updated it and said we needed to bring it back to the floor to get it voted on again. So it's current. Any questions, guys?
Anybody got any questions?
Anything changed in the flood plains or floodways?
We're still going to have that meeting. It got pushed back. The guy that was going to do it, I believe he is retired. And we're waiting on our maps to be finalized. And once they're finalized, they will come out. FEMA, well, North Carolina Emergency Management will come out, and we'll have a town hall where everybody can, and it'll be one afternoon. We'll do it for the county, then one afternoon we'll do it for the town.
Swain County, it's just an aerial survey.
Yeah, well, it's, they, they come in and whatever, there were some areas that by, I guess by elevation, they were removed. So they had to update those maps. And so when they updated those maps, they have to go back and check them and make sure that it's correct. And all the no-rises gets recorded into our current maps.
From what I understand, a lot of it was done boots on the ground.
Yeah, some of it was.
Swain County is an aerial.
Yeah. Yeah, like they, they just updated Cherokee's maps, but see, the tribe actually paid for a complete study of their whole water system. So they had to change that. And that being in Swain County, we had to, of course, sign off that it was, it was all right for them to update.
Anybody got anything else? And we need to vote on this one, Jason.
You can vote on it on the normal session.
Does, I mean, I don't think it really matters if we vote on it tonight if you want, or we can bring it back to our regular session.
Bring it back to the regular session.
Got a motion? I got a second? All in favor? Pass unanimously.
All right. Thank you, Scott.
Next is the animal service, services ordinance update.
So the committee got back together after we had the public hearing to review this again, try to simplify or make it more understandable. We worked on the violations. There were several things updated about the violations. So tonight you were given a draft, and I have copies on my desk. If there's anybody here that wants one, we'll put it on the website and everything for people to review. The committee is holding a public meeting on Thursday here at 5:30. Just for the public to come out and ask questions if they have them. It will be pretty much an open session. We will try to, you know, it'll be kind of a formal thing. There'll be probably the five minutes for people to speak and try to get their questions answered, or if they want more clarification on something else that's in there. And then hopefully we'll have the feedback from that that we can continue to move forward to get this ordinance put into place.
Any questions?
This was basically the old ordinance that was already approved, with some additions in it.
Yes.
So it's already been approved once, the old one.
Yeah.
If not, we'll move on down to county managers' report.
The only thing I have, we, I received an email from Samantha Graham from the Department of Commerce. So she works in the Division of Community Revitalization, and she's talking about there's a Renew NC initiative going on that's related to Hurricane Helene. So I told her that we would, you know, I would mention it to you all. We're going to put information out. People can access it. You know, if their homeless damaged during hurricane, there may be something that they can use. The application is coming up to close at the end of December, so they're just trying to do that final push for anybody that has not applied or, you know, utilized this service. So we'll put it out to everyone, but I told her that I would let you all know as well. And that's it.
Moving on down to G, the commissioner's report. David? Tanner?
I went to a Four Square Community Action Board, and I'll explain a little bit to you, Jay, about that organization. They are over Head Start, as well as HUD and weatherization programs, and a couple other programs, but I forget all the acronyms that go with that. But they, they are four different counties that work together. So us, Graham County, Clay County, and Cherokee County meet bimonthly and talk about their organization and what they're, what they're seeing. Number one, our county is one of the counties that use the least amount of money of the four counties of any of the, of any of the projects. You know, when it comes to weatherization or anything like that, our, our county residents just don't use the money. And I, we don't know why. They just don't ask for it. Matter of fact, there's money that was given to them for Clay County or Cherokee County and Swain County for things like weatherization. And what I mean by weatherization, that's for people who need help with a new porch or new HVAC system or a new roof, anything like that. They can go down to Miss Genie down here, fill out some application, and if they get approved for that, then they're, they have somebody who can, they have contractors that come in and fix those things for them.
It cannot be the fact that they're not aware of this program which is available.
Well, I would say that, but even when Mr. Parsons was serving on that board as a commissioner, we were, our county just wasn't using that money, and we, we just don't know why. You know, I try to get them, the resources out. Tim Hines as an alderman, I know he pushes it out too as well sometimes. But it's a really good program. They also got the HUD program. If there's anybody who wants to be like a HUD landlord, they got money for you to fix up your house and to get that ready, so that way you could be in that program. And then they're also, like I said, over our Head Start program here in the county, which we met with their director, was it two months ago now, Lottie? Because our Head Start is not in the best shape too. So that, that will be something that they'll be coming to us to talk about, just helping them with where that, that needs to go. Because it's kind of used its lifespan there. That Head Start is out there behind the Almond Center, so it's been there for 20 some years.
Could we use that money to have them to be on set to that?
That would be a good question. We could ask them. I, I don't know how that, their money goes, but that, that's a good question. I haven't thought of that. So, but I attended that meeting a couple of weeks ago. And that, that was the only real meeting that I've attended since our last meeting.
Bill? I've attended a couple of meetings, of course Swain Soil and Water meeting, and we got to have it back up to USD, the US Center since the government reopened. It was good to be able to meet there. Anyway, there's programs out there. If you have streams that need cleaned up, or if you have other things, soil erosion material, that they can get a, get you a decent price on anything to do with soil erosion, combating that, and just give them a call out there. They, they also have been working hard, the two ladies out there, Creighton Koal and also Shelby Cook on the education portion of soil and water and how it is about trying to conserve the resources that we have. And all of that's important, and I give them kudos for that because they're all about educating our children. But you have to start somewhere. And of course, we as adults are responsible people too about what soil and water erosion, properties, so it don't affect your neighbor. The other thing too, went to the DOT meeting in Silva, and read several updates from DOT. One of the big major ones was that they finally struck a deal with the US Forest Service on the I-40 project down there. And they're going to be able to cross the Pigeon River, where it flows down through there, with a temporary bridge, which they already have in place, and build a more permanent structure there. And there's one valley up through there that, that they're going to be able to get all of the stone to rebuild and pour all the concrete that's down there and not have to affect travel in the two lanes that you have, because everything will be batched, mixed. It'll be to Department of Transportation specs, every ounce of concrete that's poured down through there. And basically, they're going to put up a big concrete barrier there against the river where that washed out. That's what the engineers have come up with. So, and that's going to take quite a bit of time, but there'll still just be two lanes of traffic down through there on I-40 for, for the longest time. But at least you won't have trucks hauling stone and concrete and gravel and asphalt and all that kind of stuff. It'll be batched and made all right there without affecting the traffic flow. So just to give you information on, if you're going I-40 West, yes, it's going to be some time before that's ever opened back up to four lanes of traffic. But they, that, that was a big milestone to work out with them. Of course, after the fact, they're to clean up that valley and to try to make it some form of recreation for people to enjoy, to be able to access. And that's part of their plan too. There was other things. They talked about the Helene flood. And of course, Swain County was affected a little bit during that time. If you read the newspaper recently, the Town of Bryson City applied for monies, and it was from FEMA to replace a water line under the river. And so they, they were awarded a million dollars to do that with, which was good news. That was from the Department of Revenue, I think, of North Carolina, that allowed that to, to come to Bryson City, and that, that's good. That's progress. The other thing was they talked about the Helene damage. We didn't have a tremendous amount in Swain County, thank goodness. But in other counties north of us, they, they were hit real hard. 98% of all of the crossings at least have a temporary crossing where they, all the bridges were washed out. And they leave those temporary crossings, what they did when the water flow went down is it put a bunch of culverts and built a temporary rug across, so people could access their property and rebuild. And it's like I say, 98% of those crossings you can't access. And those are temporary bridges till they get the permanent structure built, then the temporary bridges will come out. So, but they're making great progress with all of that. And I commend people, if, if you haven't seen some of the video of the damage of that area, and I'm sure most all of you have, it was sure devastating. I'm so thankful that didn't happen in our county, but that doesn't keep me from thinking about those folks that lost life, lost property, and lost everything. So we still need to be willing to help and willing to try to serve them. Anyway, that's, that's what I got out of those two meetings.
Bobby?
I don't, I don't really have, I've not really been to no meetings, but I've, I've been around the county a lot here lately. Like I said, I mean, I've, I've grown up and lived here my whole life, but I've, I've talked to several people in this county and that I highly respect, and I've just been talking to them a lot and getting their ideals and opinions on what they want to see, what they'd like to see, their concerns, their, you know, and all that. And all that being said, I just wanted to say that Thanksgiving Day, me and my wife got in a vehicle and I rode down here to the First Baptist Church to that dinner they'd done. And I was backing out of my driveway, and I told my wife, I said, "You know, we take this for granted that, growing up, we, we went to a grandparents' house. That's all we thought of. We didn't think of nothing else. We just thought that was normal." But when I went in there and I seen it, I talked to a lot of people down there, and I just want to thank that First Baptist Church and whoever else had any dealings in that, that I'm glad that they provided a meal for anybody that wanted to come in there. And I was just, I was super happy, Tanner, when I left there to see that. But I just wanted to just be sure. I was super happy, Tanner, when I left there to see that. But I just wanted to just be sure and thank them for what they done. And whoever was all involved there, I don't know who all was, but I know there was a lot of people involved. And I went there, me and my wife, I asked them if they needed any help, and they said, had it all covered. There was people working there like bees. I mean, they were, they had it going on, but it looked like Chick-fil-A going through that. But anyway, I was going to bring that up. So, that's all I had. But moving on down to informal discussion, you might got anything?
I got one quick thing, Jay. Um, I was approached by a couple of business owners, uh, over the phone last week, uh, about the trash pickup situation during the holidays. Um, I know our, our, uh, trash drop-off area closes, uh, for the holidays. And, you know, those guys deserve a holiday just like all of us do. Um, but that does mean that our restaurants have to keep their trash, uh, piled up until we can reopen back up. So, um, I would like for us to maybe talk with Sam at the town, uh, as well as get Jerry on board too as well, and see if we can find a way to help our, uh, commercial trash, our, our downtown businesses be able to drop, you know, they, they use the truck, the, the town truck. Uh, and if there's a way that maybe that we could work with the town to get them to be able to drop off that, just the, 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 uh, restaurants and businesses because that's a lot of trash. Um, if, if they pile it up, I mean, for Christmas, uh, we closed for two days, right?
Three.
Three days. That's a lot of trash if we can't work something out with them. And, um, I know when I went there Monday and there was a lot of people there, uh, dropping off their, their trash. And so if we can alleviate that and help us out as well as help the town out a little bit and, and partner in that aspect, that would be, I think that would be a great partnership in that. And I don't know all the in, in dealings with that. If there's a weigh station, I know that we charge them for so much, but if they're, you know, we have to have somebody there at a particular time just to let them in, to let their, to weigh them and drop off their trash and then leave. And, you know, maybe that's something we can do. But I, I would like to see if we can remedy that in a way that would be beneficial to everybody, uh, working as well as, uh, our community too as well. Because if it does pile up, unfortunately, people have no respect and they'll even play with your trash anymore. So, um, it's, it's, it's sad to laugh at that, but it's true. And people just don't have much respect for everybody else's property anymore. So just something that I, uh, was approached about and I'd bring it up. So. And Lottie, if you need me to be a part of that, I can, I can reach out soon. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, did, did we ever get to Rick for work open back yet?
Uh, no, they will be. We have two open positions there and we still have an employee on leave. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, that will be, we're, um, taking applications, advertising for those positions and we'll hopefully hire them soon.
For youth basketball.
Oh, it's still going on. It's in the evenings. So there are part-time evening workers there. So basketball is still moving forward and going on just like normal.
And, uh, one more thing. We talked, or I talked about it a couple of times. And, and I'm not, I'm not criticizing nobody. But we, we need to, to come up with a way to where we can tell how much work time, manpower, we've got in different, different things. I mean, it, 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 it just confines my mind that we can't tell how much we've got in projects. And I, I'm not asking for no big, but people that's got all the employees and stuff, we need to know where they're working. We need to know how much we've spun on each project. I mean, uh, that's basic of doing anything. You've got to know what you've got in it. And we're doing projects that we, we have no idea what we've got. And, and that's not good. That's, that's not good for the, the taxpayers' money or, or it's not good just the way we do business. But surely, I'm not the only one that sees it that way. We need to come up with something to where we can tell how much labor, uh, we've got in. Because if it's going to be overboard on labor and time, that we could have a private contractor do it, then, then we would be foolish to be letting it be done by our own employees, furnishing them insurance and everything else if we can go a different route. But we have no way of knowing right now what we've got in there. I mean, she, she could tell us pretty close to the dollar. But then the rest, you, you, you don't know. It's just an educational guess is what I get. And, and, and I'm sure as taxpayers, people in audience and stuff, we, we would sort of like, wouldn't it be good to know how much you had in something or something? I mean, that's not too much to ask for either.
And I kind of do see the point too. And, you know, going back from all my years of work and I had to keep up with my time. And, you know, it's not too much to ask the employee to write down their time and give it to their supervisor. Even though they know, you know, that what days of the week they're working and how many hours they're working, but, and it may be just a touch hard to keep up with, but I, I, the only, that's the only thing like David's saying that you know whether or not that, that we're saving money or not. And I also know the other side of the issue too, when you hand them a plan out to a private contractor and say, we'd like for you to quote this job or bid this job. And they're not going to lose any money. So, you know, it, it's usually high. And I think that the projects that we've done over the years, we've, we've saved a lot of it. But like you say, time-wise, you don't know. And what is the most expensive thing on the project? It's labor that you pay. So it's not a bad idea.
I disagree with you on that there with the way materials are running.
Oh, I understand. Materials are up. Well, yeah. Yeah, they've tripled. Yeah, I know.
And I'm sorry to disrupt you there a moment ago, but I was giving a couple of hacks that I was going to send that, Lottie, of something that, you know, our task employees could, could, uh, could have used as a possibility as that, you know, program to show, you know, where, where they're at and how long it was taking them. But I think another thing, um, looking back at a lot of the, the projects that the county has done, um, I think we've kind of jumped the gun on some of this stuff, you know, uh, and, and not looking at doing, you know, maybe a, a turnkey where a private organization comes in and, and fits it. Now, I'm not saying that our guys don't need to be doing that, you know?
I know.
But.
Only other caveat of that, you know, do you hire local people that are qualified to do that? Or do we always hire somebody from Asheville or?
Yeah.
Charlotte or?
And so I think.
And you can never get anybody back to repair anything.
Yeah.
And there's two, there's several different angles that you can look at doing that. It doesn't, I, I do feel like that. Sort of what Goodbook said, the barn tearing down and rebuilding, you know, you kind of need to know what it's going to cost you before you do.
Well, and that's what I was going to say. I think from now on, our projects, I think we need to, you know, kind of have an ID, not kind of. We do need to have an idea from labor to materials to everything. And with our guys doing it as opposed to a private company coming and doing it, and just seeing what the apples to oranges or apples to apples may be, uh, to see if we are saving money or if we're spending.
Now, is that, are you just talking about one department or you talking about across the board, everybody?
I ain't singling out nobody, Bobby. That's like.
I think you are because, uh, uh, you, you take finance for instance. How are they going to do it? Uh, DSS? Or how are they going to keep up with all of their, their projects and by the time they spend on this, it's, uh?
I did it every evening in my company truck, took me about ten minutes. It was every evening thing before we went to the motel. And I exaggerated it. It not be telling you, you know, which man you had working on which job and what you thought. And it was pretty simple. I didn't even do it. You know? And I don't think it's, it's that much to ask for. And, and when I was talking about hiring, like, doing, this goes so far because we know a lot of people that's not alone. If, if I can save the citizens of this county a little bit more, somebody can come in here and build something from a water here. Don't it boil down, this county is a business. That's the way I look at it. It's a business. And if you don't run a business well, you know, you got to do, you got to do what, what people expect. All five of us is a steward of Swain County taxpayers. It's basically what we, and, and, uh,
The only thing I'd like to add to that is, you know, you, you, you've heard it your whole life. You get what you pay for. Just because it's the cheapest always don't mean it's always the best. And, you know, just like with Bobby, I mean, I, I don't want to get into what, what he's, how he's built stuff, but if, if a waterline bust out there next winter, Bobby, and you, you and your guys did it, you know exactly wherever water, you know where everything's at in that building. That's a big benefit as opposed to having, you know, somebody come in and build it. You don't have nothing about it. You've got to go maintain that building. When you've built what you're maintaining, you know it inside and out. There's a big difference to that. But, you know, always cheapest ain't always the best. But.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, I've been here thirteen years, been doing it thirteen years. This is the first time it's ever come up, keeping up the tide. So.
Anything else? If not, we'll move on down to public comment. Move into public comment. When you come up, state your name and address. You'll, you'll have five minutes to speak, no more. You'll be addressing the board as a whole, not as, as any individual, whether on the board or in the audience. The board will not make comments or answer questions at this time. A public comment to address your concerns. No time shall be shared with each individual. And you'll have your own time. First up is Bob Ferguson.
Yeah, Bob Ferguson, uh, Galbraith Creek. Um, listening a couple of weeks ago to David's questions to Lottie, uh, I was disturbed that, you know, it's like we're flying by night here. You know, this, this is a twenty million dollar corporation. That's what your budget is, you know? I mean, let's, let's have some accounting that's going on. So, thank you, David. Um, the idea of the town hall situation, that's a good one. Uh, I would say that you start out with completely open situations, no limits except for time. And I'd say one minute. You can't express yourself in one minute, you know? But, uh, otherwise, to be able to talk with you guys and get feedback from you, it's what this thing that I handed out last week is all about. About making government responsive to the citizens, which I am. And sometimes I feel like, well, this is just a knucklehead from Old Street, you know? And that ain't good because a lot of people feel the same way. And the trust in the government, it ain't there. And so your jobs are to bring back the trust in government. So, and that's a tough job to do. I mean, but little by little, you can do that. Um, I will say that, uh, a little bit about me. Okay, my dad was in the Navy for twenty-four years. And he used to complain about the Navy, how they treated him. And I said, well, why'd you put up with that crap all the time? He said, well, you have the right to free speech in America. So here I am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Ed.
Kick the bucket again. Edward Mercer. I live on Mercer Mountain. Thank you, David, Tanner, and Phil. We do need accountability in our expenses, period. It's not a question. Can I get a copy of the, uh, flood ordinance also? I'm curious. I was sitting on the river today, looking up on my mountain, thinking if we weren't so damn lucky when Helene hit, where was that water level going to be? And that's another question. In the campgrounds in Swain County, I do believe it's law or code that, uh, those structures should be movable. Okay, well, if you have electric hookup, water hookup, sewer hookup and a deck that's attached to it, it don't move nowhere. Okay? And it is ordinance. That's something to be looked at. I got a question now. If I'm mistaken, aren't we discussing as a county about short-term parking lot rental to the train for the administration? Because then that doesn't go forbid if it's short-term. Anyway, looking at, uh, the county administration building, the gazebo, I assume is county property. Okay? Um, maybe, you know, rental money for the parking lot or whatever, whatever. I was there the other day. The restrooms are closed. We have a lack of public restrooms in, in town. Why are they closed? Going into, I think it was the men's side. I took pictures, by the way. There's a manhole. It's a square hole. There's a two-inch gap. I believe there is a lawsuit going on in the city right now for somebody falling on the sidewalks. So it's something to be looking at. There's a gap in two inches. There's a, it's, it's raises up. You know, when we continue, I mean, it's, it's, it's not slightly, the manhole bar was leaning against the, the bathroom. When you walk out on those decks that were, uh, I believe they were built by Job Corps or something, it's, take a look at them. They're about to fall off. You know, we're, we're short, we're shortly going to be liable for an accident if we don't do something with that, the whole area, the whole area. The, the pavilion itself's got a burn spot in the floor. There's electrical outlets that are, I don't assume they're working. There's no waterproof covers on them. Um, they are kind of covered. Some of them are the face plates. I'm just looking at liability. Uh, all the handrails rotten, okay? Rotten and it'll shake six, eight inches. So even somebody just a little smaller than me, if you tripped, you'd fall into the creek right there. It's something that needs to be looked at for liability. It really, it is. And then also, I mean, it, yeah, it was done by the, uh, Rotary Club, okay? And, uh, and then why can't we get those bathrooms opened up? I think that'd help because that's what all the business owners, you know, there's, we don't have a public restroom. Well, you can see their point, okay? But we have a public restroom. Uh, the train took one over. You know, I'm old enough and been in this town long enough to understand there was a public restroom on Frye or whatever that little street is. And it's no longer there. I mean, there was one at the aquarium and it's inside the building now. It was, you know, the building was, the aquarium was built around it. This one at the, uh, pavilion there. You know, if we could have that somehow opened up, it'd be a benefit, you know? We have so many people parking across the street for the train, but where are the restrooms? We do have a few, but we're not utilizing them at all. Okay? And just like I said, take a walk in there and look at the, the situation. Okay? It's something to really, we need to look at. Okay? We need to look at, so county-wise, we're not looking at the liability because it's our responsibility. And, I mean, and, and sadly, it's going to take a little bit of work now, but it's something I think we need to address. Okay? There's too many people. If we're parking over there, too many people walking around, we're just waiting. We're waiting for something bad to happen. A kid or, we never know. And that's, uh, about all I got to say. Okay? Yeah, I just thought I was nosy the other day. Thank you.
Next up is Courtney Deals.
My name's Courtney. I live on Mercer Mountain too. I've been asking questions from the county manager from different department heads for a while now. And, um, it's even been reported on in the Smoky Mountain News that we have problems getting public information out of our county manager. it's even been reported on in the Smoky Mountain News that we have problems getting public information out of our county manager. The county manager who doesn't show up to work multiple days a week. We pay almost a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars a year for this employment. Is that full-time employment or is it part-time? Because I believe that we deserve a county manager who's going to be fully engaged in their job, not working from home multiple days a week. I don't want my tax dollars going to pay somebody to work at home. Okay? I mean, that's just a personal gripe. About the trash, the dump needs to be open. You charge these people that have Airbnbs a ridiculous trash fee. It's, I, I see it on our own tax bill, so it's higher than a residential. And what, we got like fourteen hundred of those in the county that y'all are getting that money from? And then you're going to close the dump on the holidays, which makes it problematic also for those of us who clean those Airbnbs. I'm one of those people too. Um, asking simple questions about certifications for things like the EMS. That shouldn't be being put off. It should have been answered way before now, not fifteen minutes before this meeting, just so that hopefully I wouldn't say nothing. But I'm saying something. I'm tired of the, I'm tired of the, uh, public information. You know, I get a response back that we don't have to answer that. Or you, you did something today where you sent me a response thinking that you had, that I already had that information, but I didn't. So thanks for that. I don't know what your intent was with that, but whatever it was, you think I knew more than I knew, but now I know it. Don't think I don't. Um, y'all gotta clean up. It's up to y'all to clean up the things going on with the county. The reason we don't have accountability for hours, you got employees who will tell those reasons. They won't tell them out loud because they don't want to lose their pension, but they damn sure telling them. Because you're working on personal projects, according to your employees. Uh, county resources. I've asked for an accounting of county resources. We can't get that still. We can not seem to get an accounting of where things like air conditioners are actually placed at. Why can we not get an accounting for what hours were spent where? It doesn't, it's not hard. I actually ran a tool trailer for a, uh, for an industrial construction outfit. I do have commercial construction experience. I have experience running a commercial tool trailer. It's not that hard to have a log of where your employees are at during the day. It's really not, unless you're hiding things. And I'm tired of feeling like there's being things hidden. I'm tired of asking questions that aren't getting answered. I'm tired of being evaded. It's very frustrating. Bob's right. It's up to y'all to rebuild the, the faith in the government and the system because it ain't there. And it's not there because it's been abused. And the people have given up because our voices haven't been heard. You want everybody to act civil. So I've not been acting civil. And there's starting to be change. And it needs to be some more of it. Transparency, I can get up with you anytime you want if you want unloading of all the stuff that he knows about, he knows about, she knows about, he knows about, he knows about. They know about part of it. But we've been hiding stuff for way too long. We've been covering up dirty deeds for way too long. And it's time for that to stop. So hopefully you can initiate some change. Thank you. I hope that the town halls you were talking about are at every work session and not once a quarter. I wasn't sure about that. Cause I know you said once a quarter. I wasn't. I wanted to clarify that if you get a chance. Thanks for letting me talk. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Out up next is Matthew Brigham.
My name is Matthew Brigham. I live at one ninety East Sheikus Branch. Uh, wanna start off by saying that Jesus Christ is Lord. Um, if you're not living for Him, I wanna pray for you. Uh, I think every one of you are, want to know Him. I want the citizens of this county to know Him. Uh, every decision you make, I want to be able, that to be able to draw them closer to Christ. Uh, I wanna start off by thanking Fred Crawford last, um, meeting for stating why he backed out of, um, the pool to be elected as chair. Um, I'm very glad that Jay is chair. I think you are the person for the job. Uh, Fred, I think, is incredibly intelligent. He's worked a lot with the government and he knows how government is run. And it takes a real man of integrity to say, I signed up for this, stating God's Republican, but I in my right mind could not go forward with it because he truly is not a Republican. He's not a Democrat. He's not a Republican. He's independent. So I really encourage the citizens of this county and y'all to get to know Him, um, just because he is running for chair next election and he will have my vote. Not that I think he is better than you because I am so glad that you're in this position now. But I think he is a perfect man for the job on that. And I want to, if you are not chair next time, I want to see you on this board. So I hope you do run for one of the, the other, um, seats. I wanna also bring about the thing on, um, contracting out building in projects versus keeping it in county. I would be against contracting out because I've worked for a contracting company and a contractor. If they buy something, it's a hundred bucks. Your bill is a hundred twenty bucks. So on materials, you're not paying, the contractor is paying a certain amount. They are charging you twenty percent more than that cost. And that's just standard on, uh, in the construction business. So I think it would cost way more to have a contractor do it than to keep it in-house. Uh, I do think it is very important to keep track of not maybe the time someone does something, but at least where they're at. Like they're at this project before lunch. I don't care if they're at that project for three hours or four hours, but I want to know before lunch, they're at this project. If they go somewhere else after lunch, I would want to know that they're there. Uh, I worked in maintenance most of my life. I was a maintenance supervisor in Cincinnati for a big company that had eighteen locations. I kept track of all eighteen location with six employees. And I made this mistake whenever I first got there. It, telling my employees, I just want you to do your job. I don't care what you do during the day. And I ended up finding two employees were going to the theater every day and watching movies. And I had to fire them. And it was a big awakening call that I didn't want to ma- micromanage what they did every hour of the day. But I wanted to make sure I knew where they were at. So I do encourage you to know where they're at, not to the level of micromanaging on what they're doing every single hour, but in broad sections. Before lunch this, after lunch this. So I think that would be a step in the right direction without getting too detailed where it just doesn't make sense to me. Uh, I don't have enough time to say what I need to say, but, um, I wanna say one more thing, um, in regards to the hiring. I think it is really good when hiring new positions to offer it in-house. But I think it's very important to offer it, uh, outside of house as well to make sure the right person is in the job. Uh, I have full faith in your decision-making on who needs to be hired. Just because I applied for a position, I think I was extremely qualified for it. I didn't get it. And me standing now, Lottie made the perfect decision. That was awesome with the mapping depart- department. Incredibly intelligent guy. He's very young. I'm not very young. Uh, but I frankly wanted twelve thousand more dollars than he's getting paid. So you did what was best in the county's interest in not hiring me and hiring him. Uh, so it's, it isn't always the best qualified person who you need to get. It's someone who knows what they're doing, but it's also financially going to be the right choice. And I was not the right choice just because I was too financially, uh, would have been too much of a burden for the county. But I thank y'all.
Thank you.
Do we have any local contractors on the live earth? One, any?
Up next is Carly Piercy.
Hey y'all. Carly Piercy, two sixty-five Branson Walk. Um, can I get a copy of the new animal control ordinance? Okay, um, and I just, the restroom, there are also restrooms at the rec park that could be opened for locals. I think they stay locked whenever the pool is closed. I know they redone the pool, so I don't know if you can, I don't know. But they could stay open. And, um, a lot of people don't know about the HUD services. I'm a person who used to get HUD. It's very important. Um, I just don't think people know. But I don't think that money should go anywhere else because there are too many people that need roofs and porches and whatever else. Um, I think we should maybe just get the word out about it a little, a little bit better. And there was something else, but I don't, I don't remember what that is now. Sorry. Um, thank you so much. Congrats. And that's all. Can I get? Oh, there. Um, I don't fully understand everything, but I didn't think anybody was supposed to be hired as an animal control officer until everything got finished. I would volunteer for that job. That's all.
Thank you.
I volunteer.
With all that being said, I've got a, a adjournment to.
I second that.
Pass your names.
Thank you, guys.